All right, we should be going live right now. Just a reminder, please speak into the mic, please bring it forward. It makes a huge difference on the audio recordings. And with that, I'll go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City Council for November 2nd, 2020. We are in session. With that, for the record, last time our livestream went down, it looks like that was a networking issue, and it was twofold. There was a networking issue, and then on top of that, we were unable to restart that. If all goes as planned, if it goes down again, I should be able to restart it, but for those watching at home, please bear with us as we go along. With that, I will be leading invocation and pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together to do the people's business. Lord, please grant us wisdom and discernment as we seek to do what is best for our community. Lord, this week with Election Week, please be with those Americans, as it seems as though no matter who wins, what races, there's going to be a significant portion happy and unhappy. Please grant us calm and understanding through this process. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Outstanding. The first order of business is special guests and announcements. Ms. Hall is unable to make it to this meeting, so we'll have to save her announcement for another time. And we'll move right on to a proclamation for Nurse Practitioner Week. It is always exciting. On accepting this proclamation, I should have a few folks here from the American Association of Nurse Practitioners, Wanda Lusk, Yehi, Rebecca Amick, Barbara McDonald. All right, if y'all want to join me up here, and I'm sure someone will get some pictures for us. Ooh, a fancy mask. Watch this, I will change it. We should have made an arrangement before we got started. Why don't you all come back here? Whoa. As I read this out, and then we can pose for the photographs. Oh, boy, this is awfully red. So first of all, this is a proclamation declaring November 4th through 8th, 8th through 14th, as Nurse Practitioner Week in the city of Maumell. Whereas nurses and nurse practitioners are trusted frontline healthcare providers for patients in our state, whereas nurses are the largest healthcare workforce and experts in providing healthcare in all settings, from the bedside to the community, and are committed to protecting the patients they care for. Whereas APRNs are highly skilled practitioners with advanced education and clinical training, building upon their initial registered nurse preparation. Whereas nearly 40,000 registered nurses and 14,000 licensed nurse practitioners provide skilled healthcare in hospitals, skilled nursing facilities, and other settings in Arkansas. And whereas over 3,000 certified NPs in Arkansas treat acute and chronic health conditions and focus on health promotion, disease prevention, and health education and counseling, guiding patients to make smarter health and lifestyle choices. Now therefore I, Mayor Caleb Norris, proclaim November 8th through 14th, 2020, as Nurse Practitioner Week in the city of Maumell, and I urge all citizens to show appreciation and support to the nurses and nurse practitioners whose efforts to protect and care for our community promote health and well-being. And so please join me in a round of applause. Also, a fun little fact, this is, 2020 has been designated the year of the nurse. And I thought, well, of course, it's COVID, that makes sense, right? But then I realized it was designated the year of the nurse before COVID came about, and so now I'm wondering whose fault it really is. No, no, just kidding. Thank you all, this is an especially important time of year to recognize those people that are on the frontlines providing for our healthcare. So please, let's snap a picture really quick. However close or not close you want to get, it's fine with me. There we go. And if you would like, y'all are free to say something. You don't have to, because they're putting y'all on the spot.
Well, I really wasn't prepared, but I am, I can always talk. My name is Wanda Lusk, and I'm the Central Arkansas Rep for the Arkansas Nurse Practitioners Just wanted to do a quick shout out to all the nurse practitioners. I'm glad Barbara could be here with me. Just think about nurse practitioners when you're thinking about your care. I think we're the best, but I'm kind of partial, I've been doing it a long time. But thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor, for responding this for us, we appreciate it.
Well, thank y'all for what you did.
Thank you.
With that, the next order of business is the approval of the October 19th regular meeting minutes. There's been an amendment that I believe y'all have received a copy of already, so at this time, if there's no discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Let me get my microphone game on. There we go. I've got a motion second to approve the minutes of the October 19th regular meeting as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Next order of business is public comment. We have one public comment card, and that is on an agenda item, so we will address that when we get to that agenda item. Next order of business is the department report, and we are honored to have Police Chief Corey Pickard here with us today. Chief, come on down.
So with the Maumell Police Department, I'm going to go over a few items that I think will be of interest to y'all. I've got a crime comparison year-to-date, from 2019 to 2020. Some good news, our crimes against persons is down about 6%, so that's great news, actually. Crimes against property is up 27%, and most of that is due to unemployment fraud. We've had and been inundated with people taking advantage of that. In fact, it's 795% increase from last year, so. Dispatch has answered 10,482 calls for service this year. We've taken 2,089 offense reports, which are basic police reports. We've worked 254 accidents and made 717 arrests. To compare with last year, we're 1,000 calls shorter than we were last year, but we've taken more reports. We took 2,051 reports last year. We worked 307 accidents at this time last year, and we had made 832 arrests as of this time last year. The arrests are down this year due to the Plaske County Jail being closed at times due to COVID, and just not, some people not picking up on warrants, some other agencies. So I was asked before to do a crime comparison study on Osage versus Maumell Valley Estates, and the patrol captain was kind enough to give me those numbers. And then I got with planning and zoning, and I want to give a special thanks to them for doing some hard work, kept me from having to do it. But, so it looks like we have about 458 residences, which is homes in Osage Falls, and 411 homes in Maumell Valley Estates, as we did the numbers. And let me find the sheet real quick. And in the council packet, y'all have the same MO from Captain Ivy as the crime statistics. And the two subdivisions almost mirror each other, from alarm calls to assist citizens. We have seven suspicious activity calls in Osage, and we had 15 in Maumell Valley. We had nine noise disturbances in Osage Falls, and one in Maumell Valley. Looks like eight theft reports in Osage this year, and 10 in Maumell Valley. We had one burglary in Maumell Valley, and none in Osage Falls. And two counts of vandalism, and none in Osage Falls. And three theft of properties in Maumell Valley, and one in Osage Falls. So just with those numbers, they almost mirror each other, both in size and crime comparison. So the one isn't any more a criminal element than the other. It's typical in a residential neighborhood. Next up, I wanted to talk about our accreditation. We're still moving forward on that. We are working through our policies. We did switch the accreditation process that we were going to go through from Kalia to Aleep, which is an Arkansas accreditation program. So we're making headway, hoping in probably 2021, late, and maybe early 2022, we should have accreditation. But we're having to work through each policy individually to make sure that we're in compliance. 2020 has also brought some policy reviews that were much needed. We looked into use-of-force policies, and we made sure that we were in compliance with the President's executive order on safe policing, and, which is the banning of chokeholds unless it's a deadly force situation, which thankfully, the Maumell Police Department had made that a priority years ago, so we were in good standing with that. We've also just gotten back two instructors from a jujitsu training, so that we can increase the confidence of our officers and give them more tools. And that's about it.
Thank you, Chief. Early on, you mentioned that property crimes was up. I was fiddling with the cameras. Did you explain what the bulk of those are, or what the difference is between previous years?
The property crimes was mostly made up of the fraud for...
Unemployment and...
Unemployment. So basically, your identity theft is up 7... For the month of July, this is how bad it is, it was a 2,700% increase. So there was 56 reports taken in just July alone of this year of identity fraud, 42 in August, 44 in September. So, and in years past, we'd have anywhere from two to four in a month, and now, you know, we have had 197 this year alone, and we still got November, December. And then another large increase that we had is, also has to do with identity fraud. It's a fraud and impersonation, which is the identity fraud that's not the unemployment fraud, so classified separately.
Thank you, Chief, for the thorough report. Are there any questions or comments for the Chief? Thank you, sir. That's what happens, you give a thorough report, and no one has any follow-up questions. Thank you, sir. Do we need to make a change to the temperature? We've had a... Make some sort of change. It's been either extremely hot or extremely cold in here, so just shout at me if we need to change something. Next up is the Planning Commission report. I believe that was Councilmember Scott.
Yes. Yeah.
If you could just get the microphone a little bit closer, please, especially with this howling wind of a PC user. Thank you.
Okay, there were just two items of interest on the Planning Commission agenda. One of them was for the Board of Zoning and Adjustments, and some folks made an application for a business in Maumell, and it was considered, based on the business plan that was presented, a sexually-oriented business, according to our code. And it was, it did clearly fall under that category, but the people who wanted to start the business were willing to make whatever adjustments were necessary in order to get their business approved here in town. So the job of the Planning Commission was to overturn the original denial of that permit, which they did. And so some of the modifications that were made were that the name of the business was modified, the display elements were modified, and the types of products carried were modified. So now it's just a retail business and not a sexually-oriented business. But it was a very interesting discussion. I didn't even know that that ordinance existed, so good job, Scott, going through all that. And the second item is Ordinance 1018, which we will see in detail tonight, and it was just clarification of, it updated and clarified existing sections of the code that determine minimum and maximum road paving surfaces. So that passed by them and came to us with a recommended request. That's it.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is a procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
Yes.
Motion carries. Also, for the record, I should have pointed out at the beginning, this is an Ordinance 1,000 meeting, which means I do have Councilmember Ken Saunders on Zoom. I'm able to see him here also. With that, we'll move on to unfinished business. The first order of business is the second reading of Ordinance 1016 regarding catastrophic leave. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Plaski County, Arkansas, ordinance number 1016, and ordinance of the City of Maumell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the program and compliance with the Arkansas Uniform Catastrophic Leave Program.
All right, is there any discussion on this? If not, it'll be on third reading at the next council meeting. The next order of business here is the second reading of Ordinance 1015 clarifying actions considered a nuisance. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1015, an ordinance clarifying the actions to be considered as a nuisance pursuant to Chapter 38 of the Maumell City Code, providing certain exceptions and for other purposes.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for the city attorney on this. On, at the last meeting, an amendment was made and was passed to modify Section 2F6 and add the language regarding noise coming from a commercial or industrial activity, and that noise had to be required for the approved activity in order to be basically allowed as an exception. So a question that I was wondering about this past week, how would that affect a small business, such as a restaurant, bar, something to that effect, that was having an event during an evening, or that stretched past those hours? Would an event, like with music outside on a patio, would that... Their permit was for a restaurant or a bar, but it wouldn't be for music, and so I kind of wondered how that would play into it. Could that business be cited for making noise?
Typically, in that kind of situation, if you're going to have an outdoor area where that's anticipated, that would be discussed as part of your business plan approval process. Assuming that it was discussed and it was approved, that that would be something that would be taking place there, that you would have that outdoor dining area or entertainment offered, then I would consider that to be part of the approved activity.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. Any additional discussion on this issue? Seeing none, it'll be on third reading at the next city council meeting. The next order of business is the third reading of Ordinance 1017, amending a master street plan. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1017, and ordinance amending the master street plan map for the city of Maumell, Arkansas, to downgrade the classification of a specific section of a proposed Maumell Valley Drive in Phase 19 of Maumell Valley Estates Edition from a collector to a local street and for other purposes.
Thank you very much. First up, I've got two public comment cards that I believe are on this agenda item. First up is Tricia Morin. Please come on down, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Tricia Morin, I live at 25 Sagamore Court. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of concerned residents. I appreciate the city's efforts to investigate our safety concerns. The residents didn't make the mistake in putting the houses in the wrong spots, but the residents are stuck paying for the mistake. So the concerned citizens of Maumell Valley Drive, over here, urge the city council and developers to think creatively to solve this problem while acting in the residents' best interest. What about creating a second street of egress for Osage at a more logical spot? This proposed road variance would be a moot point if a more logical point of entry were selected. It seems like the most natural street to connect on the Osage side would be Navajo Trail. Looking at the map, there are several streets in the Maumell Valley Estates that could be connected to Navajo Trail. This would completely avoid the issues on Maumell Valley Drive of the steep grade that would be problematic for the developer in installing sprinkler systems in the new houses, the fire department in not being able to use all of their vehicles, the city in terms of maintaining a street structure that wouldn't be as sound as if it were flatter, the existing residents who would be put in danger with a faulty road design, and the unsuspecting new homeowners who will naively buy houses on the steep stretch of road, not knowing its safety limitations. Residents did not make the mistake, but the residents are the ones paying. I would love to know what exactly the speed study tells us. Does it merely count vehicles driving over the sensor? The data might be misleading, since the sensor was actually placed at an intersection where cars would be slowing to make a turn. Does this speed study show a woman pushing a stroller with a child who was almost hit? I think the speed study misses the mark. It fails to measure what is needed, that being the safety of the road design. When a child is hit on Maumell Valley Drive, we will let those parents know that you all knew about this safety hazard and still approved this road placement, when there were alternatives to keep the citizenry safe. If the city council and/or developer is truly unable to pivot in the interest of citizens and avoid breaking city code, at the very least, safety measures need to be put into the plan, not something that'll be done later. I'm saying put into the plan. These safety measures would include speed bumps on the new section of road, a stop sign on Maumell Valley Drive at Sagamore Court, additional stop signs at the intersection of Manitou and Maumell Valley Drive, stop signs at the intersection of Navajo Trail and Manitou, stop signs at the intersection of Oneida and Manitou. Residents didn't make the mistake, but the residents are the ones paying. Our group, the concerned citizens of Maumell Valley Drive, urges you to work creatively to make a logical solution to minimize danger to citizens and maximize our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next public comment card I have is from Varang Patel. I may have just butchered that.
No, you said it correctly.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Please, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, thank you.
Hi, my name's Varang Patel, and I live off of Maumell Valley Drive in Osage Falls.
Thank you.
So along with what Tricia said, I'm kind of going to be talking about kind of the same stuff, but in a simplified fashion, I guess. My major concerns were, is safety. I live off of Maumell Valley Drive, and I'm at the top of the hill, right where the hill begins. I'm right there. So by living there and kind of knowing the houses that the existing residents have, that are down the hill currently, if I drive down the hill, all the way down, and I turn back around up that way and face up, that hill that is so steep, where I don't see how a developer can make any type of road in that direction where it would justify for that slope. Either you got to build it all the way up, or down, or whatever, but I just don't see how it would actually work. Because there's literally a blind spot, either going down or up the hill. Even if, even if a resident is backing up out of their driveway, you really have to think twice, because you don't know if somebody's going to be speeding coming down that hill, because nobody's going up the hill, except for whoever lives there currently. But going down the hills, you know, you got to take major precaution. So the slope, and that is so steep, where it's a, it's a safety concern for anyone driving, the residents, and children. There's zero visibility for anyone backing up out of the driveway, as I already stated. Also, the new homes and existing homes will suffer extensive weathering over time from water running down the slope. So by joining these two subdivisions, we're bound to have an increase in traffic, encourage speeding, accidents, and crime, which would impact both subdivisions. And my whole thing was, basically, these are two different subdivisions. Why wait over 20 years to decide today, or now, that we want to join these two neighborhoods? If they were supposed to be one big neighborhood, then it should have been, I feel like it should have happened 20 years ago, not be a point of discussion today. Also, Odom runs parallel to both neighborhoods, which provides ease of access to the main road for residents and emergency vehicles. 95% of the residents in Osage Falls, I would assume, are in opposition of this development, and I'm sure residents of Maumell Valley Estates would probably agree. My family and I, we built our house in 2016, and it took us about two years just to decide on which lot to purchase. We, we were either going to build somewhere out of Littorock, Bryant, but we decided to stay in Maumell. And Osage Falls was always, we always had our eyes on Osage Falls area, just due to, you know, just understanding that we have a single entrance. There's one way to get in, one way to get out. And I love that, because it's safe. And currently, it is really safe. But I feel like the development's going to have such a negative impact on both neighborhoods in the long run. And I've been trying to figure out if there's just like any, any logical good reason for this, but I still haven't been able to come up with one. So I'm just asking the Planning Commission to explore alternative routes, pathways for this development, as Tricia had stated.
Thank you very much, sir. With that, there was a comment made about the speed study. A resident had asked us to do a speed study. We actually did two speed studies, and the results showed nothing. Mr. Hogan is here, but apparently our licensing or software has lapsed, and they won't work without the updated packages. So we ran the first one, thought it might have been a technical error. We went back out and ran a second one and encountered the same error. I believe we've been in touch with their techs, and they're happy to sell us some new equipment. But for the time being, so there was no results from that, and won't be probably for a little while, since we don't have equipment. With that said, we did include the crime statistic sheet that Chief Pickard mentioned. I believe we have a representative that applicant, and of course, Mr. Scott Grummer's here if there are any questions. I'll open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Vapurzine?
I heard several times that a mistake was made, and I just wanted to talk to Mr. Grummer and see if a mistake was made, or this is just, I mean, this is Phase 19. So these things take time to, you know, to take place, years and years and years to develop. And, you know, this, this looks to me like it was planned out, years and years and years. And, you know, this looks to me like it was planned out years and years and years and years ago. So if it was planned out years and years and years ago, it wasn't a mistake. It's just, you know, developmental issue. Can you address that, or?
Scott Grummer, 550 Edgewood Drive. So yes, you are correct in the fact that Mammell Valley Estates subdivision was preliminarily master-planned many years ago, and this connection was actually on that plan. So it has been part of the subdivision overall phasing plan for many years. They're at that point now where they're ready to connect. I think one of the mistakes that may have been alluded to is more of a positioning of the road and how it engages the hillside at the location, causing the elevation and the grade to be more so than what was originally planned. And that's the reason for this modification or this amendment, is to try to get the grade work at a level that we, that can be approved, so.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, Mr. Grummer. Not so fast. Is this, was this an area? I am not as familiar with this area as say the aldermen that are in that ward. Was it, I've driven around over there for years and off and on, and there's been times when I see like a road kind of going down with the wooden things that indicate that there's a dead end right there right now. Was this something that looked like it would eventually go through, or is this just, is this an area that the residents would have had no idea that this might have gone through?
Well, I can't give an opinion of what people think of an area whenever they're buying a home, but both roads on the bottom of the hill and the one on top of the hill come to a dead end. It's not a cul-de-sac, which is actually an issue with the ordinance, but the road appears as if it's supposed to continue on, based on how it's finished out. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's kind of my question. And I assume nothing's come up in the comments tonight that would make you change your mind on what we're doing tonight. Is that correct?
No, sir. And I think one of the things that was pointed out as a value by one of the residents is that there's only one entry into Osage, in and out, but actually, from a safety and planning standpoint, that's not a very safe thing, because in most, in all subdivision requirements, you need a point of egress, two egress points when you exceed a certain number of houses, which is 30, and we've exceeded that in Osage.
Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion at this time? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 1017. I've got a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1017. Is there any additional discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders? Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Ordinance 1017 passes. Thank you for everyone who came out. Next order of business is, oh, it's new business. I need to open a public hearing, and we will move on to Resolution 2030? 2020-30? 2020-30? Approving lien to be filed with the Plaski County Tax Collector. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2020-30, a resolution approving and certifying amount of liens to be filed with the Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real property in the city of Mammell, Arkansas, as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances and for other purposes.
Motion to approve Resolution 2020-30.
We had a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-30. This is a public hearing. If there are any members of the public here to speak on this, please rise and come forward. Seeing none, Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, as the code enforcement director here today.
We have the, well, code enforcement is a part of planning and zoning.
Right, just somebody that would be familiar with this amount.
Mr. Grummer, would we like you or Mr. Carter? Why don't we get Mr. Carter? Well, we know the speakers out in the lobby are working.
Yeah, they do.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you. I was just wondering, $300 is a lot if it was just mowing. I have a feeling there was some other brushwork and some things like that.
Yes, sir, it's quite extensive in the backyard.
If you could speak into the microphone a little bit.
It's very loud out there, so.
Well, we can't hear you in here.
It was very extensive in the backyard. There was probably 20 years of sapling growth that had to be cut down. It was very overgrown and had a lot of considerable nuisance with, people were starting to see more rat activity and stuff like that.
Some rat activity and stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And they had to haul it all off, too, so it was quite a bit of work.
Right. I assume this was, a plat is in my ward, and I assume this was on, like, on the north side of the street. There was a house that did look a little overgrown there a few times when I went by.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, it's all cleaned up now, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the house is in foreclosure, and I think it's to be sold, probably.
I saw the sign on the window. All right. Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Also, for anyone in the lobby, there's a volume control over by the receptionist's desk. If it's not locked, if it is, you're out of luck. All right. We do have a, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-30. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. And we will go ahead and close the public hearing. All right. The next order of business is Resolution 2020-28, permitting carryover of additional vacation days. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2020-28, a resolution permitting carryover of additional vacation days for essential workers from the 2020 calendar year to the 2021 calendar year, due to restrictions associated with COVID-19 and for other purposes.
Thank you. All right. So this is an issue Chief Ezel brought to me. There are some folks that, you'll recall with our first responders, we need to make sure that not only are they being safe for their own health and for the health of those that they encounter, but also in providing a continuity of operations, such that if they have somebody who needs to be quarantined, either because they've tested positive or come into contact with someone who's tested positive, they are quarantining. The nature of this is that we're running up a fair amount of overtime, and we've got some folks, I think, that would be willing to take vacation time, and if they could roll it over, they'd give up their vacation to come in and help out, but they don't necessarily want to do that if they're gonna lose that vacation. And so this would give us the ability to make those accommodations if it's a work purpose for essential personnel, is I believe how the city attorney drafted it. And so I will open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Gardner?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2020-28.
We've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-28. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next order of business we have up is the first reading of Ordinance 1018, amending a master street plan. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1018, and ordinance amending multiple sections of the Mammell City Code to permit local streets to be paved to a maximum of 27 feet and for other purposes.
Madam City Attorney?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't have anything. I was just putting my microphone in the right spot in case somebody had a question.
Okay. So this went through the planning commission. I asked that this be run through the planning commission. We, our code said 24 feet, but we often, due to fire marshal, in fact, often, I think, always required that they build it to a 27-foot width. This would just mirror up our code with what the fire department and the fire safety folks have been saying there. So this on first reading. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Gardner?
Since City Attorney Krebs wanted to speak so badly, I'll ask a question. Can you just explain, Section 1, the box that's listed there, it does list a couple of different streets in Mammell. Can you just explain why those individual streets are mentioned here?
Sure. And there's a different, I recopied a slightly different version that I put at each one of your spots, because the copy didn't come out too well, and you can't see that what was stricken through and what wasn't. But these streets are considered the local street category, or at least were at that time. There may have been some modifications since that time. But these are examples of local residential streets that fall into that category. This is a small part, you know, it has a little Roman numeral six there. They're all the different categories, collectors and arterials and all of those, and they're examples of that, a street that falls into that category in each little section of the chart.
Okay. So it's just, they're for example purposes? Okay.
Correct. And it's already there in the code.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If there's no further discussion, this will be on the second reading at the next city council meeting. Going once, going twice, sold. Thank you. Next order of business is Resolution 2020-29, entering into a contract of obligation. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2020-29, a resolution entering into a contract of obligation.
Thank you. So we were, we reached out to ADEQ, or rather, the department formerly known as ADEQ and now known as the Arkansas Department of Energy and Environment, which has a division of environmental quality, known as DEQ, about a few things in the budget, primarily closure and post-closure funds. And in that process, they sent over a new contract and said that they wanted us to sign it, because of course, we are operators of a solid waste management facility. As I understand it, we already have a contract, and it seems like, I'll let the city attorney speak for what she thinks the changes are, if any.
There really are not a lot of significant changes. It's just their request was that we enter into a contract with their new name, with our new city officers, just restating the amount of funding that's required to be in our budget. So it, this is pretty much identical to the last contract we had with those minor revisions, but it was at their request that we have a current contract, since it had been several years.
Councilmember Mosley?
Is this, what is this amount of funding required? Why is it being required to be in our budget?
So, yeah, well, it's always been in the budget. We don't spend that money, but we're required to have the funds to close down the solid waste facility if we needed to. So it's a requirement of the law that says we can't like run out of money and then be stuck with an open landfill or solid waste facility. So this is the money that would allow us to close it down if we had to do that.
How much, how much money do we have?
It's $5,500. It's been appropriated in the budget forever. We've obviously not closed it down, so it just kind of sits there. But we were verifying whether that was a requirement, whether we'd updated those numbers recent. We were just, you know, dotting i's and crossing t's, and it led to this, so.
All right. We don't, we don't have any kind of an open landfill, then, is that correct? It's just, I've been to it before, and I didn't notice anything.
Correct. We don't have a landfill. Mr. Hogan, perhaps you can explain in the proper terminology what we do have.
Okay.
We have a transfer station, so it's not an open landfill. But the post, the closure, post-closure is something, it's an insurance, so to speak.
All right.
In case something happens and we have to shut it down.
If we shut it down, it would just be a matter of probably loading everything up that's there in trucks and taking them to another landfill or something like that. Is that correct?
Correct. Just cleaning up the debris, recycling, trash, you know, whatever's there.
All right. Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you. For entities that do have a substantial landfill or facility, those costs that they have to have on standby and ready to close it down is obviously more significant.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve Resolution 2020-29. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-29. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much for that. Next order of business is budget meeting. The current meeting is scheduled for this Thursday at November 5th at 6:00 p.m. It's slated for the Blue Room. We do not anticipate on serving food. Normally, there's a meal, but by virtue of the fact that we're all from different little bubbles, so to speak, you think eating a meal would be less than optimal. Councilmember Mosley requested, well, you saw the email that was in the council packet, so I guess I'll just open it to Mr. Mosley. Mr. Mosley's proposition is to move the budget meeting from the Blue Room into the council chambers. Mr. Mosley?
Yes, thank you. The memo that you've wrote is pretty self-explanatory, and I really don't have much to add. I just, I came by and looked at it. I hadn't actually seen the finished version, and it's maybe a little bit bigger than our old Blue Room. It's not laid out quite the same. And in the past, we've generally had a pretty packed Blue Room for budget meetings, when you put everybody around the table and you have the guests, there's always some, especially with the elections here, we may have some folks wanting to attend the meeting and that sort of thing. So there's gonna be a lot of people in there. I would feel personally much more comfortable with having our budget meeting, say, in this room here. We don't even have to sit around the chambers. We can just sit around the room or whatever. We don't have to sit at our seats, but I feel like we'd get better social distancing. We've got COVID counts going through the roof. I've got relatives, I just can't catch it because I'd give it to them and they would die. So I just feel like trying to do things in the safest manner would be preferable. If we have it in the Blue Room, I may have to attend via telephone or something like that. In fact, I actually think Zoom would be a great idea here. I think, I think it would, Zoom would lend itself very well to a budget meeting. So anyway, I'd open it up to discussion, then I'll make a motion that we do one of those two things.
We've got a lot of presenters and a lot of things going on.
Councilmember Scott?
I can't think of a reason why we would not have it here. I mean, it seems fine.
So the only, the only reason that, well, there's two reasons. One, I spent so much time working on the Blue Room to show off. And we do, we do have it all set up for audio, so that as you're sitting there, it can stream live, and you can almost hear your pen writing on paper, and that's no matter where you're sitting, if you're at that table. The idea of not doing that means that any recordings we have will be very similar to what we have here. Everyone's got to speak into the mic. You can sit out there, it'd be in the background. So the tech is actually better. So the tech is actually better. And personally, with how much stuff I have all over the place, that'd be easier for me. That said, I think left to right, we're equally social distanced in either location, but you're not sitting right across from someone. I don't think it's a big party foul either way, so I'll defer to y'all. We, I mean, we hold staff meetings in there.
I don't know whether to make the first motion for Zoom or to do it in here. I guess I'll do it in here. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and move the budget meeting to this room.
All right, I've got a motion due here, second. Second, to hold the meeting here in the council room, going once, going twice. If it dies for lack of second, it means we meet in the Blue Room. Okay. Last call, three times, it's out, fail, motion fails for lack of a second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosley, did you have another motion you were going to make?
No, I don't think it would pass. I don't think I'd get a second on that either.
And I do, I do think if there's any reason that we feel like we need to move back in here, it's just a matter of walking down the hall, it won't change too much. And we can address further budget meetings at that budget meeting. With that, y'all should have received a copy of the budget passed out. Every elected official up here on the dais has received a copy or should have. They, we walked into the room with them. For those candidates for office, we've gone ahead and printed off a copy. Please feel free to pick it up on your way out. With that, we'll move on to the budget transfer, perhaps the most interesting piece of the council meeting, in my opinion. Y'all saw the memo from Ms. Mathis regarding the $1.6 million that was in the general fund that was transferred to the street fund. And long story short, the memo probably explains it better, but I'll get wordy and explain it also for anyone watching at home. When we get grants for, say, a street project that, let's look at the adaptive traffic lights where, and these aren't the exact numbers, but I'll round them off to make it easy. If we get a million-dollar grant and it's a 70% grant, meaning, or it's a million-dollar project and we get 70% of that paid for, what, the way it works is we spend that money and that money has come out of the street fund because it's for a street project. When we've requested the money returned to the city, it was turned into, and placed into the general fund. So far as we can tell, that has been the city's practice for quite a while. The only difference, the only difference being that we had a series of large grants and then it would, they'd sort of shore it up during the audit process. As the auditors came in, they'd look and say, well, okay, this money needs to go from the general fund back into the street fund. It's one of the harms of being behind on the audit, which is why we've tried so hard to get there. And then it's, it, that action itself is not a best practice. The best practice is to take that money and to put it in the street fund to begin with. And there shouldn't be anything that the city is relying on an auditor to tell us to do. We should be doing that automatically. As a result, we went back to 2017 and have made all those corrections and put them in the proper fund. The result has been that the general fund looked like there was more money in it than there actually was. We opted to break that pattern of waiting until the audit to do that because we're making financial decisions today based on the information we have. And as soon as we become aware that there's something that if we continued the same practice would change later, it means we're not making financial decisions based on accurate information. You'll get bad decisions. So that is that. I think I've explained it. If anyone has any questions, comments, discussion for myself or Liz or anyone. And the first up is Councilmember Mosley.
Yeah, this is, I'm glad, I'm glad you all are doing this. This is something, I guess, wasn't clear to all of us over the years and we've obviously felt a little richer as far as the general fund than we really were. Council's been very aggressive about trying to spend reserves. A lot of talk about we need to spend the people's money and that sort of thing without being conservative, as conservative as I would like. So actually, we're down to our legal, legal minimum. So what that means is this year, we're going to have to be very frugal in our budget. I kind of glanced at it real quick and it looks like you've been pretty frugal. I don't know how you managed to cut so much money out of Public Works, but I don't see a plug figure going into retained earnings. So that's the way it needs to be this year. It's just, in fact, I'm favorite of across-the-board freezes and expending and everything else to, we don't need tax increases. We just had a full penny sales tax increase to do that interchange and that sort of thing. And we're the highest tax community in Arkansas, so we can't just say, oh, we'll just always raise taxes if we need more money. So we need to be frugal here is the way I look at it in our budget process. And I am glad we've got a good new finance director. I think our finance department has been pretty, pretty shabby for the last four or five years, just from a leadership standpoint. I'm not, I'm not attacking any of the personnel there. And I'm glad we've got a good new finance director and I'm glad we've got a mayor that is getting that under control. And it's certainly not our mayor's fault that this has happened, so. That's all I've got to say. I felt like I needed to say a few things on that. Basically, the finance department is something I've been worried about for years. We started the Financial Oversight Committee there for a while because we were really concerned about some things. And hopefully, hopefully, this will be a bright spot in our organization going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Just using some scratch pad math here and looking back at our last packet, we had a balance of about $3 million in the street fund. So am I correct in that we'll have about $4.7 million roughly sitting in our street fund at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have the exact number for this month.
Right, and I'm just, I'm looking backwards, just adding 1.6 to what was there, so, okay. And, and once it goes into the street fund, those funds have to be spent on street or street expenses, payroll. I know we split that out with Public Works.
Correct. So to address a little bit of the things we've done, first of all, thank you to Liz who's worked tirelessly. You know, we had a negative $2.5 million, a rough $2.5, $2.6 million appropriation from fund balance for 2020. The budget we've submitted is, I want to say, at $120,000 in the hole, which means we've managed to find $2.5 million less. That did not come without growing pains. Let me finish. Not only Liz, but each of the department heads and everyone, once they understood the situation, jumped in immediately. One of my first goals right off the bat is no, I didn't want any layoffs if we could at all have that happen. As we dug into it a little bit more and found out that layoffs was, was something that we could avoid, the next mission became to go ahead and try to give all the folks the raise or increase that they would have had normally, which isn't a monumental amount. Coming into this budget session, I was trying to put together a play to adjust the pay upward even more once we got the numbers, obviously, that changed and we went into a maintenance mode. But some of the things that we paid for out of the general fund probably are better served in the street fund. For example, streetlights were in the general fund and can be and have been in this budget transferred over to the street fund. That's $111,000 budgeted amount. Likewise, we went into departments that had other costs that could be more properly attributed to the street fund, such as, say, Senior Services, who provides a transportation program. We rotated their transportation drivers, their folks that qualify under street funds and rotated that out into the street fund budget. We have not provided you with that street fund budget. You'll get a copy of that here on Thursday. Part of that depends on what happens with the initiative currently on the ballot. If that issue passes, then we know those revenues stay what they are right now, kind of going forward. If that doesn't, then we have to start examining the long-term plan for how to address that issue. So I don't know if I've addressed your question, but it has been that. And then just flat out, the following day, I remember getting all the, doing the normal cuts, getting the budget submitted, and then Ms. Mathis came in and let me know where we were at. And after a short, or not so short tirade, I shifted gears and realigned what we were trying to do. We put into play, or I put into place, a hiring freeze immediately, especially as we tried to sort out, I didn't want to end up in a situation where we were having to lay off employees at the same time that we were hiring in some new ones. So see a few position cuts, none of which are currently occupied by someone. They were vacant positions currently. The hiring freeze will remain into effect until we can be sure that we're not in trouble. And this is, none of what we're seeing in the general fund is good, but it is not, it was discovered early enough that there's enough time to adjust. It'll be painful, but there's enough time, so. With that, y'all have the budget, you've seen it, you haven't looked at it too much. You'll get a chance to. And then we'll get a chance to discuss it on Thursday in the Blue Room. And if there's any other questions for me or Ms. Mathis, who can speak much more intelligently about the details, we'd be happy to do that as well. With that, I'll, it segues perfectly into Mayor's comments. The mayor, at the last council meeting, the city council approved a raise for the mayor. It was a pretty big raise. I think that year over year, the percentages wasn't that high. The information that was used for that was based on, you know, that was the pre $1.6 million adjustment. With such a belt tightening, I've opted to not accept that money. I don't think, I don't think that would send the right signal at this time. So with that, I also wanted to point out now to some good news regarding finances. The White Oak, the city was approved for a grant from Metro Plan for the White Oak Crossing Country Club Parkway Roundabout Grant. And that is of course, so that's great news that we got that. We will have a line item in the 2021 budget for our share of that. That's an 80% grant. The remaining 20% is supposed to be split by us and North Little Rock. Still trying to work out some of those details, but that's exciting to see. Now, I've got assurance from Ms. Mathis that if we do that project and proceed and we get any money from grants, that that money will be deposited immediately into the street fund and not into the general fund to discover some years down the road, but, yeah. With that, I wanted to say Mr. Hogan sent me a text message. It looks like the software that we needed for the speed studies is already on the way. And so it looks like that'll be happening anyways. And we'll go ahead and get that speed study out because we said we would. It's just a little bit later than we'd like. That concludes Mayor's comments. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Scott?
A gentleman contacted me and he said that he's spoken to one of our other council members as well. And he just, his bicycle is not allowed on the trails because he's an e-bicycle. But he wanted to point out that sometimes pedestrians are not very friendly on the trails either. Like they'll be walking dogs with a really long extractable leash. And he just wants everyone to be kinder and gentler with each other on the trails and to just use common courtesy. So I told him that I would just mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Everything's a lot easier when everyone cooperates with each other. Councilmember Gardner?
Mayor?
Let's go to Councilmember Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. I think everybody but me has received a copy of the proposed budget. And I guess because I wasn't there tonight, I don't have that copy. Could I impose upon you to leave that at the front desk so I can pick it up in the morning and review it before Thursday?
Better yet, I will bring it by tonight or have it brought by.
Well, that's okay. Tomorrow morning will be fine. I'm not going to do anything tonight with it.
Yeah, but then we've slept and might not remember. We'll get it to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. I put this information in the packet just so that you all could be aware of it. It was, two weeks ago, the Municipal League did a webinar on the CARES funding and what that meant for cities. And my takeaway from it was the executive director was practically begging cities over and over and over again to apply for their share of the funds. They mentioned it over and over because the deadline is coming up, two weeks from today, actually, on the 16th. And so I followed up with, and this is just news that I didn't, I didn't know. I followed up with the Municipal League and they told me that our, that Monmeil's share was about $680,000 that would be paid back to us. And one of the bigger changes, thanks to Liz for explaining this, was one of the recent Department of Treasury rulings that would allow us to be, basically reimburse ourselves for first responder pay would qualify as a reimbursement. So I appreciate the mayor and our finance department for doing a lot of work to get that set up. And it's my understanding that they're going to take care of that and get it filed for. So they basically said, please apply. If the cities do not apply for our share, and ours is $680,000, then that money will be reallocated and given to somebody else through different areas. So that's great news for us. So I thank y'all, Mayor, for doing that.
Correct. And so I've attended a few of those meetings. Ms. Mathis, I believe, is on a weekly call. They've changed the game a little bit. One of the reasons that we haven't applied for that yet. So don't anyone sit here think that we're going to get $680,000 check into the general fund. We've been using some of the, as I've mentioned in previous council meetings, we've been using some of that for some of the COVID response. And then we have a hefty list of projects from department heads on possible ways to prepare for, prepare to handle appropriately COVID and be able to respond to it properly. So with that, the goal originally was to use that and we didn't know we could get reimbursement. And so the goal was to find those things that we needed to respond, especially once we, you know, we, and then we would, if we couldn't come up with enough good legitimate ways to spend that money to respond, any excess, we'd just sort of do the, that, the request for reimbursement. That changed a little bit, obviously, with the, the budget scenario and the situation that I mentioned a few minutes ago. And we've switched more to trying to make sure that we're using the COVID response a little more specifically and targeted to make sure that it's necessary and not just us applying for a grant because if we did, it would go away, sort of do. So we've got those projects there. We will have some of those and then the remainder will just apply for reimbursement. It's like putting together a giant puzzle where you're trying to make sure everything goes together at the same point in time. But thank you. Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I owe a debt of gratitude to Councilmember Scott. Having mentioned the pathways, I have fulfilled an obligation to a constituent of mine who specifically called me. I am simply reporting what he told me to do. I'm not, I have nothing in this game. But he was talking about, he is an avid biker. And he was talking about, he called me that, I believe he's also spoken with Madam City Attorney. His bike is an electric bike. And so she's familiar with what I'm talking about. But he said that so often, our paths are only six foot wide. And if two people are walking, that they are beside, beside, plus they have earphones. Again, I'm, I'm reporting what he asked me to say, so I'm not, have no complaint. But at any rate, he wanted to know that, he wanted to, that there is, from his viewpoint, there is two sides to the issue. That if people are walking and they're, they're, have earphones, they're not looking behind, they're not checking, and to go around them or whatever, it keeps him from being able to enjoy the paths as well. So he wanted me to make that point. well. So he wanted me to make that point, that, that there is a, you know, everybody, as we, the mayor said a moment ago, be kinder and gentler to everybody. Everybody consider each other, and try to make it a success for both people. So as best I can remember, that was what he wanted me to, to say to the council, that there's two issues. Madam City Attorney may have something because his bike is, is electric, but it's still called a bike or something of that nature.
His comments to me and his discussion with me was over the fact that he has, and I don't know all the technical specifications on bicycles, but basically, it's an electronic assist, so that the motor kicks in at certain times to assist while he's riding the bicycle. My interpretation of our code section, which I discussed with him and cited to him, was that we don't allow motorized vehicles on our trails, period. We discussed the state law, which allows a city to make that determination. We, state law says that we do not have to allow motorized vehicles on our trails, and that is the way it's currently written. He pointed out that there are certain classifications of the bicycles. Class one and class two is normally allowed on the trails. And then I pointed out to him, but that is with the caveat, that the, the local municipal government can, you know, can make, can pass an ordinance not allowing those motorized bicycles on the trails. So he may be approaching you to get that changed, because that, my recommendation was to him was, you know, talk to your council member, because that's something that can be changed, but it has to be changed through the process. And as I currently read it, we don't allow motorized vehicles at all.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any additional councilmember comments? All right, we will move on to City Attorney's comments.
Just one thing. Councilmember Gardner sent me a question about the mayor's salary. I did want to point out, there, there's a state statute that says that the mayor shall receive such salary as the council may designate. Our ordinance that we passed used language of shall be paid, but there is another statute that says that it can be decreased or shall be decreased if requested by the official. I don't sponsor any resolutions or anything like that, but my recommendation would be that there would be a resolution passed accepting the mayor's request for the year of 2021 only. So if anyone would like to pursue that, just let me know. Okay. Thank you, councilmember.
Councilmember Gardner?
Just, I guess, a question on that. Can a resolution override an ordinance?
Well, the resolution could basically authorize the, the mayor's request to increase it, because there are, there are two separate statutes, and one of those allows that request for the salary to be decreased. The main reason you don't want it, typically, you don't, you can't decrease a mayor's salary in the long term, because that, you know, if they didn't, they didn't run with that salary in place. But if they request those, that is allowed.
Okay.
But it would need to be by council action, as I read the statutes.
And would this be a, a one-year resolution, or is it until the mayor asks for the salary to be restored? How would that be worded, based on Mr. Vakrzan's motion?
I mean, you can choose to word it, in whatever manner that you would sponsor. My recommendation would just be that we take it a year at a time. If the mayor, this is the mayor's request at this point, that we do it for one year, and then he can request that again the following year, if he so chooses.
Thank you. Anything else, Madam City Attorney? Oh, your mic was off. No, you're good. It picks it up. Madam City Clerk?
Why, yes, I do. I'd like to introduce to you guys our new deputy city clerk, Ariel Smith. She's sitting out in the audience.
Welcome.
Ariel has obtained her bachelor's degree in public administration from UCA, and she is also working on her master's degree. She didn't take a gap. She's gone full steam. She's been with us for a few days now. So you guys make her feel welcome, and happy to have you.
Thank you. With that, take a peek at the FYIs. Don't forget, tomorrow is Election Day. If you haven't voted, please get out there and do that. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. I've got a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.